The town hall for back better known as Baltimore. Uh, action catalyst team for change. And so we are so excited to have you to be a part of this town hall. Uh, meeting on this evening. We are looking for answers to help us solve. Uh, some of the issues, some of the problems that exist in Baltimore. Uh, so we felt like we did not have all of the answers ourselves. But we knew that the people of Baltimore has the answers that are needed to help us to change. To move forward in this city, to stop some of the murders that are occurring, to deal with the issues of abandon. And vacant homes here in the city and many of the other problems that are facing us right now. I'm so very, very grateful this evening to have each and every one of you here with us. We were having some technical difficulties, but we made it on. And so we're very, very glad we're going to move right through. Uh, very quickly, we're going to omit some of the um. Things that we would perhaps say normally, we're so glad to have. Our moderator here with us on this evening, uh, two Smith and and you're here a little bit more about him. In a minute and assisting him is going to be his, his director or his assistant is here. Uh, Karen Bullock, she's going to be coming forth in just a few minutes as well. We want to take this opportunity. To talk about our partners that are here with us and we're going to just give a shout out to them right quick. We have Danielle Austin Pender from excellence and ambition Danielle, you hear it now. You know, to give a shout out to her.
Yeah, big Daniel. Y'all gotta get excited, you can't be on it. If you're not excited, get off the call. I don't want you here. Get excited.
Hello, everybody. We hit you.
Ain't got no time to be sad, we gotta lift up.
I missed you guys in person. I missed the hugs. You guys know I'm a hugger and I just miss you guys.
We got you, B. We got you.
Yes, yes. For those who do not know me, I'm Danielle Pender. I am the founder of excellence and ambition in Park Heights. We help young people aged fourteen to twenty-one start businesses. We also have workforce development programs. Teaching young people how to renovate homes. And so um, thank you very much for having me on. Thank you for coming on and it's gonna be a great conversation.
They shall remain tame. Good job.
That's done now. And also we have um Catherine Cooper Nicholas here. Catherine, are you here?
Ms. Catherine, where you at?
She's not on yet, but if you would guys uh, Sister Saving the City, Ms. Catherine is the founder of Sister Saving the City. And we provide a safe space for young people in the same age range from age ten to twenty-one in Park Heights. And um, you know, the youth village concept is um, something Ms. Catherine has been working on since twenty-ten, which is a. College-like space, multiple buildings for young people to be able to go to, to learn the skills necessary to um, to be great. And so thank you to Ms. Catherine and hopefully she can uh, her technical difficulties, I'mma text her now, see what's going on.
Yeah, tho- those technical difficulties this afternoon. I mean, I've sent out the uh, link to everyone and and I came in and then. Wasn't able to come back in, so bear with us on this evening, all right, because we're gonna make this happen. We also have Pastor James, Isaac James, is he on board yet?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
All right. So.
Uh, hello to everyone. We're technical difficulties on this end to my Martin. Uh, Apostle Gerald A. James and a counsel messages send our love to everyone.
Okay, great, great. We appreciate you. We do have uh, some people that are also serving as advisors to us. We have Reverend Teresa Mercer. I know she's not here on this evening. Do we have Chaplain David Lovelace? He is one of our.
He's there.
Uh, advisors.
He's there.
He's there.
Give a shout out, give a wave.
He's there.
I'm here. I'mma, I'mma keep my mouth shut and listen tonight, y'all.
All right. All right, chap. We're glad to have you uh, with us uh, here. We're gonna move right on. We know that we have our mayor is gonna be coming on in just uh, mayor elect is gonna be coming on in just a few minutes. We also want to acknowledge any clergy, any elected official, Sharon Green Middleton, she represents District Six. So we're glad to have her on board. I heard her speaking a few minutes early. Earlier, so we want to acknowledge uh, any of the our elected officials that we have, any pastors, any community leaders. If you do, we do not call you by name. It's not because we do not appreciate you. It's just that because of time, we will have to um, you know, try to keep it moving on this evening. I want to say this very quickly and then we're going, going to. Um, have Karen to come back before you, Karen Bullock, that is, to come back in a couple of minutes. But tonight, we're gonna be talking about technology, communication, education and retooling here in Baltimore. And okay, this is a little bit better. Retooling here uh, in Baltimore. And um, there, we feel like the crime that is happening in our city. All of the murder, much of the drug use, many of the other things that are happening in our city are all linked together. On our last session, we talked about crime, we talked about safety. Uh, we talked about some of the other issues that that are happening. And tonight, we wanted to deal with the technology and communication, education, retooling. A portion of it. So we have a whole host of panelists that are gonna be here to speak to us on this evening. But I want to say this and then I'm gonna move right out of the way. And some people might be ready to to sign off when I say this. But I hope you'll bear with me for just a minute or so. Uh, I have a two-year-old great-grandchild that I keep. He likes watching this particular show. I don't know if I can say it on the T, Santiago. He likes watching Santiago. And one of the sayings that. They have on that particular show is pirates, good pirates never give up. And for the last two weeks, he has been walking around here saying, Gigi, good pirates never give up. Good pirates never give up. And that thing has been registering in my heart with all the woes, everything that we have that's facing us in the city of Baltimore. We cannot give up. The other thing he likes about the show is the giant. There's a golden giant. He always tells me he is afraid of the giant, but that's the only one that he really wants to watch. And I came to the conclusion, I asked him, well, if you're scared, why do you keep watching it? And I decided that the reason he keeps watching it is because he will not allow his fears to keep him. From facing what he has in front of him today. And I said, those of us that are here in Baltimore, we may not have all the answers. But we cannot allow the problems, we cannot allow the issues that are confronting our city, stopping us. We are good citizens, we are good residents, we are good neighbors, we have good communities. And so we never can give up. We have to keep fighting against those woes until we completely defeat them. At this time, I'm turning it over to the hands of Karen Bullock, who is gonna introduce our moderator. And then we'll move on from there.
Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And I'm so happy to see everybody. A lot of people are jumping on. I'm really excited. I just wanted to be able to go over some housekeeping things. Um, if you have any questions, there's a little thing that you can wave your hand. I'm here to assist him. He's kind of gonna go through this process. But Chu Smith, for those of you who do not know him, is a former member of the Harlem Globetrotters. He has been doing, we actually, we just celebrated fifteen years of service with Chu Smith Youth Empowerment. He will be turning fifty. Yay, on the fifty club on the thirtieth. And without further ado, because I saw Brandon Scott just come in, I'm gonna turn this over to him so he can introduce our mayor-elect.
Hello, everybody. How you doing?
We can wave, we can shout.
Um, before, before I get started, um, because I know uh, our esteemed mayor-elect. Um, he, he has to go. But I want us to keep in mind that that God is in charge of this whole process as it relates to our lives. Um, COVID systemic racism, everything that's going on is designed for us to come up. And be able to be resilient through change and challenge. So I want us to keep in mind as we answer these questions, as we have this dialogue. That we keep our spirits up and we understand the victory is already here because we have. Great people that's on this call and it's on a Zoom call. That wants to do right and want love to come through and resonate throughout all of Baltimore. So I want us to keep, because you know, we had these town meetings, we get upset, we go back and forth. We have these challenges. But we have to be open-minded and be empathetic to everyone so we can create some change. Before I call on uh, our fifty-second uh, mayor-elect. Uh, I just wanted to tell Sharon Middleton and thank you for. Your due diligence and your ability to serve and love the people. Because it's all about the people. And Ms. Spence, I appreciate you for thinking of us to want to share where we are and and our hearts. So we're gonna, without further ado, and everybody on this call is a champion. And every, no one is gonna be slighted on this call. We are all number one. So without further ado, uh, before I introduce Brandon. Here's a young man that I've seen grow from the time he's been in high school. Uh, just boots on the ground doing the work. He's done a lot of stuff with me over the years. And I just want to say before I introduce him. I'm proud of you, you know, because before you kept working, you kept working. And at the end of the day, it's about having the best interest of the people. So I just want you to understand that uh, on behalf of Chu Smith family, we love all of you. And we love you, brother, and I'mma be praying that whatever we can do to support you as our mayor, we will do. And also, man, uh, I've lost a lot of people over the last year. And I just want to say to your grandmother, man, uh, prayers out to you. So without further ado, uh, Mayor-elect, uh, Mr. Brandon Scott.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chu, and and thank you for all the well wishes and thank you, everybody, for having me, having me tonight to talk with you guys. Albeit ve- very briefly. Uh, now, I figure we can do this one of a few ways. We can, if you guys want to, you guys can really just start to ask questions. I don't like to, I'm a very simple, simple person. I don't need a lot of pomp and circumstances too, and I know our time is limited. So I don't have to give some big fancy speech. I think we all know. Uh, why, what we hear about and what we need to talk about with the issues that are pressing and facing the city. So I don't need to tell you guys that because you are living it every day and are doing the work to try to address it. So if you prefer, I would just say thank you for having me. I can't wait to be your mayor. I will work hard each and every day to make our city the best version of itself we can be. And really just want to get right into talking to you guys about the things that are on your minds and and where where I see it and how I think we should attack them. And hey, Madam Vice President.
Yeah, I love it. I love it. So uh, we're gonna get started. We're gonna get down in it. Um, first, we're gonna uh, acknowledge some of our esteemed panelists. We're grateful to have them on. Um, first up is Ms. Bria Jones here.
Bria made it in?
Did Bria make, because she was representing the youth. She's not on.
She hasn't gotten yet.
She hasn't got in?
Amira.
You're here?
Oh, there you go.
No, I was saying that Amira is on to represent the young people.
Okay, all right. Um, next person we have is Danielle Austin Pender. Danielle is a Baltimore resident and founder of excellence and ambition. She partners with Sister Saving the City, done work as a member of parent council for Baltimore County Head Start. President of Macology. And she's done work with Living Classrooms Foundation and the Carmelo Anthony Youth Development Center. So that's how, that's one of our panelists, so give her a hand.
Hello, everyone. How are you?
Our next esteemed panelist is Ms. Dawn Roberts Mark. Is a former Baltimore County teacher, administrative leader with fifteen years of teaching experience. Master's degree in education leadership, acting executive directive act for youth. Which is based upon a nonprofit organization whose mission is to alter the trajectory for Baltimore youth and partners. Give her a big hand. Please forgive me.
Good evening, everyone.
Accountration of your name, good brother. Dela uh, Delali Zaraza. Right. I got it.
You got it, man.
I got it, my man. Currently lives in Baltimore City. Uh, but he's with the Baltimore City Health Commissioner. He's a CEO and founder of Fearless, a full-stack digital service firm in Baltimore, Maryland. The mission to create software with sole tools that empower communities and making a difference. His wife is with uh, the Baltimore City Health Commission, I'm sorry. And he's a graduate of UMBC and he has a computer engineering degree. So give him a big hand. Uh, one of my sisters that I've done a, a great deal of work with, a powerful, powerful. Uh, young lady, Ms. Dionne Weems is a West Baltimore native. Was a highly sought-after civic thought leader and social innovator. With crazy passion for Baltimore, for individuals. Dionne is the founder and chief energy officer of Audacity Group. And leads a marketing and brand shop that supports bold ideas. For more than a decade, she was the vice president of marketing community fairs at Visit Baltimore. Where I was one of the influences that they picked for visited Baltimore. Uh, Dionne developed many of the city's most uh, successful brand initiatives. And she fueled in two thousand eighteen, the largest social media movement, MyBeMore. Give our great esteemed panelists Dionne a big hand. Marvin McKinstry, my little brother. Uh, Marvin Kinstry is the senior pastor of Victory House Worship Worship Center. Leading advocate for youth Baltimore City. And works as a job developer for the mayor's office of employment development. He is also the founder of helping overcome obstacles daily. It's called the Hood Project. And was a member of the transformative justice committee, a group that spearheaded initiatives. To reconcile the relationships between Baltimore police and West Baltimore residents after the Baltimore uprising. Give Marvin a wonderful round of applause. And last but not least, is Ms. Karen Rivera. Karen Rivera works for Park Heights Renaissance and is the community school coordinator at Cross Country Elementary Middle School. Also works with Doc, Dr. Martin Luther King Elementary Middle School and other pieces, trauma coordinator. So we're gonna, we're gonna get down into it. Uh, we have five minutes to ask the question. I picked certain people for these questions because I felt. Like your expertise would be warranted. So the first question. What do you consider the most significant problem facing students living in underserved communities in Baltimore? When it comes to virtual learning due to COVID? And what has become the city's new norm? Karen Rivera. You on the spot, you on deck.
I'm on the spot, that's okay. Um, well, I think one of the biggest problems we're facing right now is the mindset. Um, because for our students, the virtual atmosphere is a big transition for them. Um, unfortunately, our children are not, they're not used to the discipline required. To some of our children aren't used to the discipline required to excel in the virtual atmosphere. Um, I think so mindset and the other part of cour- of course, is the social emotional piece. Um, just not being able to um, hang out with their friends, they're, they're, they're not able to. Um, receive the structure that a lot of them receive during the school day. For s- for a lot of our kids, the only structure they have is the school day. But you know, so right now, I think that the two biggest things is the mindset, you know, in regard to the discipline aspect. And definitely the social emotional piece.
No, I appreciate you. Great answer, great. Uh, Ms. Dionne, you know, you, you are, you know, really wired into all community aspects. What, what's your take on that, Dionne?
Um, well, Chu knows I am a mother of three boys. My oldest is nine and the twins are seven. Um, and we're all doing virtual learning. As a parent and speaking to teachers, the love and the wraparound services are, are there. They're, the, the teachers want to help, the principals want to help. Um, but I don't think any care has been taken into what's required of the parents. Um, that are a part of this process, um, the, the time off from, from work. Um, not even before we get to the connectivity, right? Uh, that you're running back and forth every ten minutes to the point that you, that you made, Karen. It's, it's so hard to, to keep focused, right? Um, and for us to have smaller children, there, we've turned into this society where it's some like high-tech, low-touch. And that's just not how people are wired. Um, especially when you're talking to young children or who are still building that, the foundation. And you can't learn the fundamentals of being a human being or productive human being through the computer. Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't set up for that design. Um, so I, I think having the tough conversations and reimagining, like that's my, my key word for everything. Throw all of the old rules out the door and let's create what works best for us right now.
Um, I love it. I love it. I love it, Dionne. So um. Mayor Brian and Scott, what's your take on it?
Well, I, I, I think that both uh, Karen and Dionne have pointed out some of the issues, right? I think that when you, and this is the conversation that I have with uh, young people, when I talk to them, right, about what's going on. And I think it's you, if you, you always say uh, that when you really want to know if something's working, ask the people for who it's actually supposed to be working for, right? You ask to the, the, the doc, the patient, not the doctor, as one of me and Councilor Middleton's former colleagues used to say. And the young people overwhelmingly, I probably now ask like two hundred young people this, if not more. Overwhelmingly don't like uh, virtual learning. And the reasons that they give are exactly what we just said, right? They, I can't focus, right? It's harder for me. I can't, I don't have my t- I can't rely on my teachers and other folks like that. There's no one there to help me. Uh, when you, you, so you have to under- understand that. And they're also uh, missing uh, something that we don't talk about a lot, which is. Uh, just as important when you talk about the education and that's their social, be- becoming social, like they're, they're so. Uh, disconnected from their friends, their networks, their growth that you would see for, for young people. We know that the, the sheer connectivity is an issue, right? Uh, getting, you know, listen, my, my best friend is a, as a, as a vice principal, almost all of my friends work in, in city schools. And getting the, the equipment to, not just getting the equipment to the families. Making sure that, you know, adults do adult things and actually make sure that the stuff works and gets it up for the, for the young people. Making sure that they have the speed. For example, one of the issues that we're talking about i- is it, it's not good enough for us to give a young person a laptop. In a hotspot if there's four people in the, in the, inside the house that need the internet at the same time. And they can't use the video chat and they can't use those kind of functions, right? Like, we have to think about all of these things and then think about for our younger kids, as, as Dionne pointed out. For them, this is why, you know, we had to do things like wrecking parks and create these, these hubs. Because for many of them, their parent has to work, right? Think about it. We're talking about the very people who are keeping us healthy and safe, who are working at Hopkins, who are working at UMD Hospital, who are working for our health department. Who are doing the jobs that no one would do anytime, let alone during a pandemic. Their kids are gonna be left at home alone. And I don't care what anybody says to you. No five, six, seven-year-old is just gonna be equipped to sit there and learn by themselves. That's the kind of creative thing that we're gonna have to tackle, not just as like city government, but as a community really. Because we know that we have to keep our young people and our teachers and staff safe. But we cannot allow our young people to fall, fall further behind in some cases, simply because their parent had to go to work. We can't, we can't call these people heroes all day and then not support them uh, and support their families while they're all saving the world.
No, I appreciate that, Brandon. That's, that's great dialogue. Um, Ms. Amara Lawson.
Amira.
Amira Lawson. One of the things that often happens is we try to put policy and put things in place for you all, but we don't listen to you. And this dialogue is about you as a young person. Tell us what we need to look at and what we need to see based on your eyes, young lady.
Um, I'll say, like everybody's saying, you gotta get this point of view that we are kids at home.
Right.
And I think home is one of the bigger parts, like I'm at home, so I get to lay down on my bed, get laid on my couch, you know? Sometimes I might fall asleep. In school, you're up, you're sitting in the classroom with other people. The lights are on, get into acting, you gotta walk to the other classes. As to where, and you're at home, you're laying down, just got a log on or you know. Um, when you're asking your sister for help, it's not like she can teach the whole class if somebody, internet's going in and out. It's like a whole bunch of distractions that comes into play, but when you in school, you can disconnect yourself from your home life. That's another big part of it. Like when I'm in school, I get to talk to my friends, you know, or I go to gym and got sports to do, it's activities. I feel like when I'm at home, I'm drained because I'm in one spot. I'm starting the laptop, so I gotta go to class, gotta have my camera on. And then when I click off, I gotta still look at my laptop to do work and I go to my next class. You know, it's like in school was better because if you didn't finish your classwork, you just gotta come back tomorrow. You get that time to be home and sit at home. When at school, when you're at home, it's just school. I feel like it's not home no more, if that makes sense.
No, I appreciate you so much because you, you are the voice. And, and we have to listen to you and, and I, I appreciate your courage and you stepping up, sharing with us. Because we need to hear you and we need to put some things in place to help you. We appreciate you, okay? Great job. All right, so our next question is gonna be. Something that we have to really pay attention to and is, is something that piggy, piggybacks on Ms. Lawson. How can Baltimore bridge the digital divide that exists between students and parents? Living in underserved communities and those living in more affluent communities? My great UMBC grad, talk to me, good buddy.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Thanks again for having me, but you know, I, I'd say the first step. In bridging the digital divide is actually a desire to want to bridge the different digital divide. Um, you know, the fact that there's so many homes that are disconnected. Um, and so many homes that, you know, don't have access to uh, resources as they're, you know, more affluent. Um, communities do is, is not an accident, right? It's very intentional and how the city was created from the beginning, from redlining to policies. Um, and lots of time and lots of effort and lots of thought went into building this city the way it is today. Uh, to benefit uh, you know, a, a number of people. And so the first step has got to be, do we really want to, right, as a, as a city bridges divide? And how do we then apply the same amount of energy that it took to pass policy, to get people on the street, the communities? Um, to make sure that we all have a vested interest. Um, and, and early on, right, how we got here was people believe I've got a vested interest. If I, if I redline, I've got a vested interest to make sure my community's safe. Uh, our, our wealth is going up, our home values are going up. And so it was in, they did things in their best interests. And I think one of the, one of the initial, one of the big pieces is how do we make sure that everyone understands that? It is in all of our best interests to make sure that our kids are educated. Um, it's in all of our best interests to make sure that our kids have access to resources and. Uh, understand technology and, and their families and they can connect. So many people can, can work from home now and uh, you know, depending on what type of job you might have in your connectivity. And so those that can't, they're suffering on multiple fronts, people just said, right, from having to be, being forced to go into the office or go to these um, environments where they have more exposure to COVID in general. And then you've got just, you know, connectivity issues on top of that. And so I'd say the very first step is wanting to do it and being really intentional about doing it. And there's a lot of technical ways and paths in which to get there, but you know, if we can't get past step one, um, it's very problematic to, to get the other steps.
Um, Amira, talk to me, sweetie, like, how do? Amira, talk to me sweetie, like how do you feel about with, what he just spoke about and what's your take on it? And what do you think is needed as it relates to you as, as you deal with a lot of people that's faced with these issues?
I think some in an aspect online is good because like he said, people can connect with their families more. There's a lot of people had, that has been missing connection because you know, if you're at school, your parent always at work. And you come home from school, your parent is always gone. But now that parent is more, is home more to get to connect with them, bond in time, you know, help them with their homework. But also I think the main focus should be trying to get kids, the internet and the laptops. And a lot of schools has been, and I'm really thankful for that, people beginning up laptops, they've been donating. My teacher was telling me about T-Mobile paying for internet for kids that don't have it. Because I saw my friends who's just on their phones, like trying to do classwork on their phone, that's hard because you only Zoom. And you go to Google Classroom, but you gotta have all these links and apps and websites to help with your classwork. So it was a really big part and I'm really thankful that people were donating laptops and wifi so kids can do their work more easier, if that was the case.
Outstanding. What, what, what school do you go to sweetie?
I go to Frederick Douglass High School.
Oh, my girl. I'm proud of you. Great informative answers. And it, it shows that you on your way. Great job. Great job. Great job. The next question. How does the lack of free citywide bandwidth, wifi or internet services impact students' ability to learn and their family's ability to thrive in today's society? My esteemed panelist, Ms. Dawn Roberts.
Hi, I'm, good evening again.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Dawn Roberts, Mark is fine. Uh, by Dawn, it's fine. First I wanted to say before I begin that the part that was missing from the introduction is that what we do at Extra Youth is provide social and emotional learning and spiritual formation to the students. Uh, our partnering schools in Baltimore City and Greater Baltimore as well. In grades, we primarily working with grades four through eight. And I'm helping them, you know, in just kind of filling in the gaps. Kind of piggybacking on what Delali said. I think it's interesting when we look at the, the city's bandwidth map and how the city really wasn't designed to provide access to the, the people who reside there. You know, having said that, I think that it's, it's pretty discouraging to see and, and to, you know, in talking to our youth that, you know, a quarter of our black teens are having a hard time even completing assignments because they don't have the access to the bandwidth. They don't have access to the internet. It's not stable. So they're having to leave their homes to go elsewhere in like during COVID, whether it's the library, which a lot of people don't have access to that, or going to their schools to, to get their code for that. Do you hear a kickback?
You're good.
Okay. Cause so there's, there's a lack of reliability there that, that I'm seeing personally. I know that being on the town hall meetings with parents at the current school I'm working with, the frustration level is extremely high because they don't know how to help their, um, their, their students, their, their children with the connection. And they themselves don't know how to do it. So there is a lot of frustration there. And that's hard to, that's hard to say. How, how can they thrive when they're feeling, they're feeling defeated throughout this process?
So Daniel Pender, Danielle, Danielle Pender. Let me ask you a question to piggyback on what she said. What could be the solution? What is a solution? What are some of the solution based things that we can do to improve upon some of the challenges that Dawn spoke about?
Well, I know of a program called Project Waves. And they are, they work with us at Sister Saving the City with a, with a full blast theme pro- program. And so what they do is they hire the young people who come to our facility, the ones who are recent graduates, you know, the 18, 19, 20 year olds. And they teach them how to expand on the Waves project. What Waves does is it creates a net of internet access between buildings within a specific geographic area. Now, I am not that person, believe me, I'm not the tech. Really wish that Mohammed could have been on to speak to Waves, to Project Waves. But Sister Saving the City is the only location in Park Heights that has Project Waves. And so the young people who live in the vicinity, right around our building, have a, a boosted internet connectivity because of the antenna that's been placed on, on our facility. And so if other places, other homes would allow for an antenna to be placed on their facility and that would create a bouncing effect between those two and that would boost the, um, the bandwidth in that particular area. And so that needs to, I, I feel like the programs like that, I, I don't know of any other program or project that's doing that. But we need to promote those organizations, businesses that are working with the technology, that are hiring the young people, that are training them in these tech projects and these career opportunities. So that we can outfit our whole city. Why can't the whole city have this technology? And anyone who wants to be a part of it, if you're a homeowner and get an antenna placed on your roof, doesn't, it doesn't drill holes in, nothing like that. It's literally just a booster for the internet service that you currently have, that you can assist your neighbors, you know, with their children trying to get onto school. So that's a solution that I, that I see immediately that could, that could really make an impact.
No, that's perfect. And that's why we gotta write these notes down and, and start incorporating that in the process as we moving forward. Great answers.
Do you mind if I, do you mind if I add, piggyback off of what, what Donell said?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that okay? So just so you know, I, I just want to make everyone aware. We did community school coordinators and I believe other educators, we did receive a training last week given by Comcast, just letting us know that Baltimore City students, they will be receiving hotspots, the ones that don't already have it, will be receiving hotspots free from T-Mobile. And I'm just looking at my notes, so please forgive me. But the hotspots will re- remain active for five years at no cost. Even if, if Baltimore City families have debt that they incurred with Comcast, they, they're still eligible for, to receive hotspots and they've collaborated with T-Mobile. So we are, you know, we are making leadway. At Bo- Baltimore City, we've given out about 48,000 laptops to our students. In regard to the technology piece, I think one of the biggest problems honestly is computer illiteracy. Because a lot of our parents and guardians and grandmothers, they're, you know, they're computer illiterate. So it's just taking the time to help them get online. It, and that in itself is very time consuming. I know for me, when I transitioned into the virtual atmosphere, there were so many things I needed to learn. So, um, you know, device wise, we are, um, we are making a lot of leadway. And I do, I do know of the program that Donell is speaking of. I think they have about, they're in about a hundred houses because I, they were actually a part of our training. So we are making leadway, but like I said, a lot of it is the computer illiteracy aspect of it.
Gotcha. Appreciate that.
No problem.
Next one, next question. What grassroots solution exists to help youth, seniors, workers and families to overcome the financial hardship of purchasing the internet services? So you pretty much covered it, but I want Marvin McKin- McKinstry to speak on that, please.
I think we have a tendency, even when we come to these conversations, to forget that we have some pillars, some real stakeholders in each community that go way above and beyond government, you know? One of which is the institution known as the Black Church, which is normally the only thing that we own in our communities. Programs are coming up and we starting to see them more and more, you know? But I have a church in my community, a serving church in my community. And we have a tendency to forget that we have businesses and churches and, and people that are right there in the community that if we all are brought together on the same page concerning these needs and these concerns, it's, it's even left out of these conversations. Like we'll talk for two hours and never talk about the real community stakeholders. The people that, the, 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 the people that live in these neighborhoods go and spend their money with all the time in, in the corner stores and, and things like that. And I, I love being able to go throughout the neighborhood where my ministry is because I'm a pastor that actually lives and votes in Baltimore. Yeah, I said that and I meant it. I'm a pastor that lives and votes in Baltimore. Because when you don't have a real stake where you are, when you don't, you know, your children don't attend the schools in the city where you pastor and all of that, it's a disconnect. But many people, because all you do is come in, you're two times a week and you go because you have no real vested interest in what happens in that neighborhood. But I live, work and pastor all in the same council district. So where, where I vote and, and all of that is I'm a real stakeholder. And it's in my best interest to be able to know the folks in my community and to be able to be a voice to pull us together to say, okay, this is what the need is. How are we going to help serve the need? And I think we have to take things like that way more serious. We do a lot of conversation about what the government needs to do, what Comcast needs to do and what other people need to do. But what happens if they don't come through for us? Are we just left or are the people who are there all the time going to be held accountable to save our own neighborhoods? I don't wait on anybody to do anything. If it's a need, we gonna bang together, we gonna address it, even if it means taking the money out of my own pocket. If it means our church giving out of our own budget. We got to put some of the onus back on the people who are right there in the community. And it does require some educating. It does. It requires some educating on, on, on understanding some of the stuff. If it wasn't, uh, if we wasn't in the space that we're in with COVID right now. My church got so much internet and, and, and power and all of that stuff. And so I'm gonna be calling Donell tomorrow to find out how I get my signal booster. Because I ain't had nobody in my building. I don't want the liability. I'm gonna be honest. I don't want nobody kids in my building. Germ factories ain't coming and getting me sick. But I want to know how to get my booster because I just heard something tonight that can help me better serve my neighborhood. So my solutions always start from within. I thank God for everybody else and whatever their perspectives are and, and the various aspects that they do work. But if we don't start boots on the ground and getting the stakeholders that are right there in the community, we gonna continue to miss the greatest resource that we have.
Well, well Marvin, I, I just wanted, that was, that was outstanding, man. And I just want to, to piggyback on what you said and where you're coming from. One of the things growing up in Baltimore, I grew up in Gilmore Projects. And it was tough in the late seventies, early eighties. And everyone raised each other and everyone ho- held each other accountable. And traveling the world, being around different nationalities, different ethnic groups, different social platforms that people rise up their communities all over the world. It made me feel like I had an obligation to come back to Baltimore and give, not talk about it, but show and demonstrate. See, one of the things that's hard about even doing this town hall meeting right now is that people are upset because we have these forms, we say all these things, but nothing is being done. And our young people and our elderly people suffer from it. I'm not here to, and, and I'm gonna be honest. I felt a little uncomfortable in doing this because I've been to hundreds of town meetings all over the world. And part of what I see most and oftentimes is we don't have the economics. And if those that do have the economics and the resources, it's only geared to a certain people or a certain status of quote based on the initiative that's given in that area. And people get, come up missing. So Marvin, I appreciate you sharing that. And I wanted to do it a different way, but I also wanted to pay respect to the powerful people on this call. Because it's important that we, we get this engagement. We have to learn from each other and understand what are the issues. And then we gotta put some things in place. I just want to share this real quick before I go to the next question. I had to take a step back because I was down in this real heavy. I put hundreds of thousands of my money and a lot of people did not support me in a way that I thought they were. And I get it, but I took a step back and I'm not complaining. But we just been awarded 20 acres to make change. And we have support across the country that's gonna, we gonna redo our aspect of what Baltimore should look like. And it's going to be called a Rise Baltimore, the communis- the communiversity that loves. And that we're going to create an oasis where people like you all, we're going to partner up and we're going to come together and we're going to have like-minded hearts. And we want to rise up and be stewards and accountable so Ms. Lawson can look at us in a way that we're supposed to be looked at. So they can grow and be trailblazed to the next generation. All the talking, I'm here because I wanted to introduce myself to the community. And I wanted those that didn't know me, that listen, I'm willing to do whatever it takes. But I understand Marvin, but we gotta go through this because we gotta hear the greatness and see how we can collectively bring all people together and we can move. And, because I know the frustration, but that's bear with us. Let us get through these questions and let's smile and let's shine, all right? All right, number five. What can be done to attract more black and brown teachers to Baltimore City schools? And how can we better the plight of our black stu- black and brown students in Baltimore? I want a couple of people to elaborate on that because I don't want to box it in, even though we got great educators. But we're going to start off with you, Ms. Marks.
So for me, I was, I thought about this and, and it, it didn't seem very obvious at the time. But then I thought about it and I said, why don't we have more black leaders? Why do we not have more black principals in the schools, male and female? That for me, when I think about my time in Baltimore County, excuse me. If there was a white principal, there were more white teachers. If there was a black principal, there were more black teachers. So my feeling is that as a student of color, yes, I need to see more people who look like myself teaching. But I need to go beyond that and I need to see someone in leadership, excuse me, of, of brown skin being there. As, you know, teachers, when I first started Baltimore County, I didn't see many black teachers at all, all black, but, black principals. They just weren't there. So what if we script, you know, you know, kind of shifted the script a little bit and had more black people in leadership to promote and bring along, you know, black teachers to follow through?
That's a great answer. Ms. Pender, how do you feel about?
When I think of what the, on a national level has been done to get more teachers in general. There's a program called Teach for America where you have a, a concerted effort to get people who do not live in specific urban areas to go into those areas, learn about them, teach there for two years, then you're able to get your student, student loans taken care of or something, something. And then after that two years time, you're then able to put on your resume that you, if you're from Idaho and you came to Baltimore after two years, you're able to put that on your resume that I was able to go into an urban environment to teach. And then you're, you're giving opportunities at, uh, you know, state level of, uh, you know, education, right? What of education or whatever. A lot of those teachers don't stay. They do their two years, they get their benefit and then they go ahead, you know? And what I found was when, this is when I was in school system, 2008 through 2011, 10. And so when, I wasn't there long yet, I went straight to OST. But it, a lot of those Teach for America teachers weren't, did not look like us, you know? Um, but, um, it, a lot of those Teach for America teachers weren't, did not look like us, um, you know, um. And so I, again, I'm always solution minded. If we could come up, there was a program that was created for the general teachers of America or whatever. Why can't there be one specific to target African-American or brown, um, people? Um, and it'd be a similar type of program, um, where you get the experience, you maybe do a three-year bid. Um, it's not just targeted for urban environments, but you want people who actually live in that community to teach in that community. Those who understand the cultural competency of that community to stay there and then get jobs in that school system, right? As opposed to bringing in outside people who do not know that community to come in. Um, so I know there's a precedent for it. I know that in the other states, they've tried programs like that, but I feel that Baltimore should maybe think about it. Um, um, and so that, yeah, I'ma shut up.
No, that's, no, that's fine, that's fine. Uh, Ms. Mill.
So I just, I, can I just, I just wanna piggyback on what you said, Denell, because, um, I know that there was an initiative a few years ago, um, with, um, again, well, I'll just, I won't say where. But, um, there was an initiative when it came to wanting to, um, to, to promote, to, 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 you know, bring black teachers in. To go to the different colleges to start there. And they didn't send people of color to do the work. So that hap- that was, that was a disconnect. So I think that more thought needs to go into the process of, and this, you know, initiating and, 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 you know, making this work.
No, I appreciate that. So, uh, Ms. Lawson, talk to me. How, how do you feel about what Ms. Pender and Ms. Roberts said? And, and where are you with your position? Because you're, you're, you're brown, black student. How do you feel about?
Um, I feel as though I do agree with having more black teachers. And elementary and middle, I have mostly white teachers and there's nothing wrong with that, but I just never really, um, had a lot of teachers that looked like me. Until like high school, like in my area. And also I'm gonna touch on topic that it's also about being qualified as a teacher.
Hmm.
Cause, um, oh, oh, once, um, in high school, I felt.
Can we turn up the mic?
My teacher wasn't qualified. My teacher wasn't qualified to teach the class. It was a substitute. I don't appreciate when schools brings in substitute for half the quarter. That brings kids back and it should not be our fault because you not hot, you're gonna hire the right person to teach us. You're not hiring the right people who can handle our different learning disabilities. Or if, um, I'm a little behind, but everybody's faster than me, you can't just go on, you know, you gotta have time to help other people.
Hmm.
Gotta have time to listen to your student. And that's another big thing. Because sometimes when I tell my teacher, oh, I don't understand, this is hard, it's always a, go look at your notes or you already know this, we learned this. But it's, you can, you just gotta go over it. You know, everybody don't learn the same and everybody don't have the same information as you do. But just take your time with students of all ages, because everyone has difficult and hard days. And just listen to them and help, and they just help them learn. That's all we wanna do, we just learn.
See, one of, one of the things that I think we can, we can learn from Ms. Lawson is her voice is powerful. And part of what makes her voice is her understanding all aspects of her as a youth, as well as us as being adults. We can learn from them and we gotta hear them out because a lot of those solutions is right here, right here, right now. We getting solutions from this young lady. And I'm telling you, sweetie, uh, outstanding. What grade are you in?
I'm in a ten.
Oh, boy, yeah, promise, promise. I appreciate you, sweetie. Appreciate you, appreciate you.
Can I say something real quick about that?
Yeah.
Um, and this is kind of with my job developer hat on, one of the things that I noticed is that, um, career pathing happens way too late with black students. We are not talking career, um, with black students. A lot of them come in my office and haven't been so much taught the basics as how to do a resume and, and some of the other simple stuff. And you know, we got two major HBCUs here in Baltimore that I would love to see, um, because both of them have teaching programs. Um, other programs too, but they both have teaching programs, maybe even at the middle school level. To go and connect with students and start raising their interest in, uh, being, uh, teachers and things of that nature. Because the other aspects of it is reactive. You know, we on the backend and we trying to, trying to pull some people in, you know, that late in life. Uh, uh, you get in early, you get in on the front end and you start to develop that interest, um, in young people early. Um, because everybody has a favorite teacher. I could tell you some of my favorite teachers going all the way back to elementary school and that was thirty something, forty years ago. Um, but I can still tell you because they had that kinda impact on my life if we catch them early. And that's with all careers, but specifically the teaching profession. Catch them early and start to grab that interest while it's still innocent and develop it. Um, we probably get a lot more people that are interested in pursuing that career path.
No, outstanding Marvin. I, I appreciate that wisdom and knowledge that you shared.
Oh, I'm so, well, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I wanted to know if I could piggyback one, his comment.
No, that, that's you on the panel. Get, give it up.
It's just, I didn't want the call to end and I'm looking at Delali, um, Hack Baltimore. We chair this organization in the city of Baltimore, which the, the foundation is Superman is not coming to save us. And we didn't need him in the first place because the people that are able to solve these challenges have literally been working on the ground. And you're on this call right now. Like there's, uh, we're trying to change the way that Baltimore approaches our challenges. Like change the way that we even think through the problem first, how about we have the people that are most impacted by the challenge at the table? So here it is, we have been complimenting Ms. Lawson about, with her comments because she's speaking from lived experience. So what we've realized is that lived experience and common sense work every time. So if we could stop talking about, you know, um, what, Delali was like forty-seven hundred nonprofits in the city of Baltimore?
Something like that.
Forty-seven hundred, like, at this point, some problems should have been solved, right? So if, if we're able to identify the challenge, we already have forty-seven hundred nonprofits that have, that have dedicated their heart. They're doing the work, right? But they're doing it on small scales because they haven't been able to get the resources that they need to do it big. So if we could actually put our focus into growing that homegrown talent. Yo, you, you solve problems here in Baltimore, you solve every challenge in every major urban city across the United States of America.
Hmm.
So I'm, I just didn't want the call to end because the reason that we're a part of this panel is because we need to be held accountable.
Hmm.
There's no reason why students, uh, don't understand, uh, government or, or don't understand the problems that are going on in the cities. Because we should, Dion should have a responsibility to speak to the students every Tuesday from twelve to one o'clock. Because I'm a business leader in the city of Baltimore, born and raised in West Baltimore. Hold people accountable. And it starts with us. Like we, literally, if the people on this call had all of the resources in the world. I'm sure half of the problems that we're talking about tonight would be solved. So with that understanding, how about we work collectively? And I know that it's not a, a concept that we are used to embracing. Because of all the systemic challenges that have come, like we've had to hustle. Like it, it's, it's not our fault that we are wired that way, but we have got to reimagine now. We have got to change now. Because we are not gonna make it with this individual narrow mindset. It, I apologize. I digress. I just.
No, no, but I, but I, but I think that is, is very important that, you know, emotion, as long as we channel our emotion and understand and put our emotion in perspective. You know, we have the intentional way of thinking and then we have the impulsive way of thinking. And they both balance each other out because passion is good and, and being able to express yourself is good. But we gotta have healthy conversation and then we gotta have the power to listen. And I think that's the hardest thing for us to do is, is listen and get out the way. Because a lot of us have some traumatization. Like I can speak for myself, I've been traumatized as a kid. I've been traumatized part of my young adulthood. And when you have to go through that transformation to find yourself and understand like, I'm flawed. And I'm out here doing certain things, but I'm still flawed. And how do we collectively seek help, seek training? And, and when we're, uh, doing wrong, are we gonna get upset or are we gonna take it and say, you know what? You're right, Dion. I messed up. How can I make it right? And I think ego comes in and that's why this conversation is good. Now, after this conversation, what's the next steps? Because now we gotta start collaborating and really collaborate. Cause we, we only start doing things when it's tragic. You know, when tragedy, see, COVID is tragic. You know, systemic racism, George Floyd, Freddie Gray, we can go on and on. It's tragedy. But the truth of the matter, for some of us, we've been living this our whole lives, our whole young lives. So it's important that we can say all the right things and that's why it's, I know it's some people on this call like, man, what we doing? Another town hall meeting with us all this? What are we talking about? I, I know that, but the only way we can transition is we have to have these difficult conversations. But after that, we gotta do something about it. Like I'm working, like I'm not, I know it's a resource issue. And it's an economic issue and it's a heart issue because people got the money. People got the money. People got resources, but it's in the hands for only a select few. And I never realized that until I start really opening my eyes because we wanna see the good in everybody. But unfortunately, people have their own agendas. So we just gotta come together, but I appreciate you, Dion. And that's what this is all about. So let's go to the next question. What concrete steps must be taken to retool something that you were just speaking about this generation? Older adults, those who have lost jobs or businesses and those that's in the re-entering society. Based on the science, technology, engineering, art, math, STEM in the midst of COVID pandemic. So we're gonna go with you, good brother. I love you, Delala.
Yeah, man, I, I'm totally gonna call on me. I had, I had some stuff to, stuff to say on this one, but, um, I, I think it's, it's important, man. And it, and it goes to what you just talked about, which is, you know, we're in a crisis right now, whether it be systemic racism, COVID, all those things. But, um, it, and as everyone's talking, I'm thinking about, you know, even in the middle of all this, I mean, what an opportunity, right? I heard earlier that, you know, some four, forty-four, forty-five thousand devices, you know, out in the community now, hotspots and, um. And yeah, this has been, these have been problems that have been, been around for years, right? So the fact that people are stopping and paying attention right now and people wanna move, there, there's a window. I don't, and I don't know how long the window lasts. Um, I don't know how long we'll be here, but people are paying attention. Um, you know, COVID, George Floyd, everything happening, election, everything happening has really made people stop and pause. And wanna figure out how to, how to change. And so I think it's up to us to take that momentum and how do we kind of keep pushing it? How do we, how do we, you know, how do we fan the flame and, and make sure this thing doesn't go out? Um, so it is exactly what you talked about. It's how do you connect some more resources? Dion talked about some stuff we're doing, um, in Hack Baltimore. So many organizations, right? The Digital Equity Coalition, a band of, you know, fifty-some odd organizations are coming together to talk about device access and, and connectivity. Um, and resources to community, like how do we like lean into that? And how do we take this opportunity, right? You know, we, we've seen that again, you know, connectivity is part of it. But even if you have, there's literacy, there's a huge literacy gap, right? And how do we, how do we fill that gap and how do we upskill and train? But it, but, but again, we've got a window to lean into it so that, you know, if, if and when something like this ever happens again, right? We're prepared, right? We're not sitting back looking at, we, we would have, would have, could have, should have, we, we didn't do this and we're left behind yet again. Um, we're seeing how much those that have, you know, competency with, you know, technology, even, even to just get online and get into a meeting, right? To do work, um, is, is essential, let alone, you know, you know, anything else you wanna build on top of that. So I think we've got a critical window and we've gotta like push and lean into this really hard to make sure we don't get left behind.
No, I appreciate you. That, that's, that's great. That's outstanding. Uh, let's go to the next question. How can schools incorporate basic life skills into students' educational training? I'ma go with you, Ms. Millie. Ms. Millie Gov, I'ma go with you. Cause they told me you, we gotta unmute you.
She got me.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm over here multitasking.
No, that's fine.
I'm over here multitasking. I'm sorry. Give me that question one more time.
How can schools incorporate basic life skills into students' educational training?
Well, as I think about it and, and what I do for the Pratt Library, um, I think schools need to make sure that they understand where all of our students are coming from. I think as one of the panelists said, um, and actually the, the young, uh, lady in the 10th grade, um, I, I just commend her for her excellence. As she's saying, saying about knowing about us, knowing what it is that we need, um, what, what, what the kids need. Not only tell them about education, but also talk to the, let the kids ask questions, tell them what, let them tell you what, um, they, they need. I think that that's very, very important because, you know, we may have the education, but we have to start off with the kids' basic needs. What they need to, to survive, what they need to, to, to be educated. They can help us to learn.
No, I love it. Ms. Marks, what's your take on that?
So we, we are in a u- unique, um, position with Acts for Youth because we, um, provide in-service. So we're in the school, we're online now, um, during the day, during non-academic time. Also being able to push in during class time to provide social, emotional learning lessons. A lot of the schools are doing it, but they have blocked times in the morning for like fifteen, twenty minutes where it's like, hey, how was your day? How was last night? Oh, I'm sorry you're upset about that, but I don't have time to talk to you. What principals are beginning to see is that it's very important, it's imperative for sustainability, right? For students' sustainability and for their, um, their self-preservation to be able to have access to someone who does have the time to listen to them and to talk to them. So I think that providing the social, emotional learning time, like really providing that time within the class day. Um, allowing their resources, the, you know, the nonprofit organizations who are equipped to provide this need. Allowing them to come through the doors because I think that ultimately that's what's gonna change the trajectory for the students, right? Um, with our program, we, um, provide high school readiness from the eighth grade on. Um, my program director, Tay Lee, is actually on here and she's been working with students. She's been with the organization longer than I have. Um, and she has like wraparound services for the students who have graduated from the program. They come back and they're big sisters to the students who are coming up. So we need more access to these buildings. We need the stu- the teachers and the, the, the principals to do the work by providing the tests. The Devro test to the teachers to find out what the social, emotional needs of the students are so that we can then go in and help.
No, I love it. That's, that's beautiful. Ms. Reva, what you think? What's your take?
Thank you. Um, well, I definitely, um, believe parent engagement is a big part. And, um, part of parent engagement, um, has to do with addressing trauma. Because in all actuality, trauma is the root of a lot of this and trauma is the root of a lot of the disconnect with the community, with the students and with the families. You know, a lot of times I'm at meetings with a lot of governmental officials and, you know, I always hear, oh, and they don't come out to PTA meetings and they don't do this and the mo- what's going on with the mothers? And they, they don't care about their children's ed- education, but in all reality, would you wanna come out to a PTA meeting? If your boyfriend is punching you in your face the night before? So we have to be able to deal with the trauma piece, um, in order to empower, um, our black and brown people. So that they can be viable in the community. Also, we need to start vetting agencies better. What I've noticed too is a lot of times like with PRP, um, agencies, you know, people are so quick to, um, recommend a PRP because their, their cousin runs it. No, we need to start vetting these people that we, um, are introducing to our children in the schools. Um, we, we need to start understanding that these people that we introduce that are imparting into our children, that makes a difference. And it can't just be solely on charisma, like the young lady said, we need to start vetting qualified people that are in it not only with passion, but with academia, with the whole wraparound.
No, that's wraparound services and is, is most important. Yes.
I agree.
I love that. Um, let me, uh, uh, where's Ms. Lawson? Talk to him.
Um, I think it is important to also talk about the trauma because like I said, at school, you get away from home. It's a lot of kids who, um, be get beaten at home or who get yelled at at home, you know, verbally abuse and physical abuse. And like physical, I feel as though you can see and can stop, but if it's verbal, you would not know unless you talk to that child. If they're. If they're getting put down every day and then they come and tell you, oh, I'm not smart enough, so I don't know how to do this. And you go say, oh, well, you learned this already, so you must not do this, you're putting them down more. You know, just talk to them sometimes, having someone to talk to like a counselor at school, it is very, very helpful. And I think it's harder online because you're home, you cannot talk about your trauma that's coming from home online to your counselor. You get what I'm saying? And my trauma is coming from my parents at home, I cannot sit on Zane and tell my counselor what I'm going through and try to get help. That is another hard part about being online. It is hard to open up to grownups because they don't listen and they push it aside. And they say kids can't be stressed and kids can't be depressed or have, you know, responsibility. And it's, it's from school, it's from the classes, it's from home, it's from having a social life. It's trauma everywhere. So I feel as though it's very important to have someone to talk to at school. And it's very important to talk to the kids because you never know how deep their trauma can go.
Oh, boy. So let's, uh, uh, go to the next question. How must we address the needs of seniors regarding technology gaps when it comes to receiving emails? Having virtual doctor's appointments and connecting with family via social media? I'mma go with Dion.
Hi, so again, because I come back to the forty-seven hundred nonprofits in the city of Baltimore. I don't see how it would be a challenge to either find, uh, well, let me say, this is before COVID. Things have become, like I'm about to approach this as if, you know, COVID didn't exist. Um, so damn. Once again, it, I mean, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I, I apologize for cursing. The people that know me know that, um, and I apologize to anyone else, pastor, please, please, please forgive me. So Lord Jesus.
You're on a fire, you're flaming.
So, well, I will say this, the, cause we're talking about real solutions right now. Um, Delali brought up the Digital Equity Coalition, right? There, again, this is sixty nonprofits in Baltimore that have formed with one thing in mind, how do we bridge the digital divide? Um, and what they've done is they've actually broken the nonprofit, uh, I'm sorry, they've broken the group. Um, cause it's a collective, they've broken a group into about three, uh, different focuses, some are looking at advocacy, so they're going to the lawmakers like, look, where is this funding? We gotta be able to help with this. Um, then it's talking to the groups that can actually help with the hotlines. You know, like people who are, you know, who are willing to volunteer their tech time. Cause we have a, uh, Delali is actually, you know, he owns the tech company, right? We have people in our tech space that want to lean in, they want to help. Okay, well, you wanna give five hours of time to be able to, you know, dedicate to the phone calls that are coming in from madam so-and-so who doesn't understand how to, you know, to hook up the Zoom. So to just know that we actually do have a group that are actively working on this right now. So if, if there is someone that is encountering that, I would say that we could, you know, make that connection, you know, after this call. Cause again, people are doing the work, uh, we just have to do a better job of sharing their story. So I, I guess this town hall meeting underscores that, so thank you.
No, that's beautiful. Delali?
I was just gonna add that, uh, I, I put the link to the Digital Equity Coalition, but um, I don't have anything, uh, anything new to add to that. Yeah, never.
Thank you, Delali.
No, that's perfect. Alright, so what can we do to bridge the communication deficits? Lack of connectivity and fund opportunities when it comes to information sharing between the city, funding sources, associations and residents? Dion, I know.
Man, you caught me, man swallow, what'd you say? I missed it.
It says, what can we do to bridge the communication deficits, lack of connectivity and funding opportunities when it comes to information sharing between the city, funding sources, community associations and residents?
Hmm, okay, I don't want this to seem self-serving again for Hack Baltimore. Um, but to know, one of the reasons that I was drawn to the organization was because, uh, Delali and team for a year prior to this have been working on this ideal portal. So it's actual database where people can, um, submit the challenges that they're encountering within their community and to be able to track, um, how it's being worked. So there is some accountability, I've, I've put this in that, you know, these potholes have, uh, have been a challenge in our neighborhood for three weeks. Is there a way for us to find a sustains- sustainable solution so we don't have to encounter this anymore? Someone sees that challenge and they're like, you know what? We've actually been working on, you know, so-and-so and they're able to move the challenge to an actual solution. And it becomes a sustainable solution because you're actually involving the person who reported, who, 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 who's sharing the challenge, right? Um, so this is a new form, again, of thinking, but I want Delali, Delali, can you piggyback on explaining like how to, thanks, man?
Yeah, so the, the major intent was that, you know, Dion keeps talking about, you know, those forty-seven hundred nonprofits and you add, you know, everyone else that's on the ground that's maybe not registered and, you know, just, just, you know, residents across the city that wanna give back or corporations. That number is much, much higher, people that wanna help. Um, a lot of the issue which we're seeing was, you know, the right hand didn't know the left hand was doing right. So everyone is solving the same problem, their, their own way, there's lack of resources. And so everyone's just trying to get it done as best they can. And, and so what we, what we tried to push for and say, why don't we try to figure out how to make sure people are just more transparent? If you're working on something, just register it, raise your hand and say, I'm working on this. And before you start a new initiative, go check to see who's already working on it. Partner with them and move their work forward before you start a brand new organization, a brand new initiative. Uh, let's figure out how to collaborate and better leverage the resources that we have, uh, in general. So that was our, that's our big push, uh, to just bring some transparency and some accountability along the way. And people that just wanna, look, if you're someone that says, look, I don't have time, but someone's working on this, then you, a little bit more money to get over the finish line, cool, let me support that. I see people working together, I can, I can watch what's happening. Also, it becomes a tool to share best practices. So if you solve the problem that works in your part of town, great, someone else may need that. Put all your resources up there, put your solution, tell them how you fix it, let them know how, how they can leverage your work, uh, to further their own work. So that's really our whole push from what we're trying to build with the idea portal.
Outstanding. Marvin, give me something, what, what's your take?
Oh, it, one of the things that I've done is I've given up on the idea of me saving Baltimore, right? I can't save Baltimore, um, but Baltimore has two-hundred-and-seventy-seven neighborhoods and it, one of them is the southwest Baltimore neighborhood that my church occupies. So my focus is to do what I can do there to unify the people there. And I'mma tell you, the nonprofit industrial complex in Baltimore, I don't think I'mma ever get a five oh one C three. I don't think I'mma ever petition these foundations or these politicians spending money because, true, you've been in this long enough to know that if you, it ain't about what you really have to offer in Baltimore, I'mma just tell the truth about, I'm smiling at you. I'm happy, but I'mma tell the truth about it. In Baltimore, it's not about what you have to offer, it's about who you know and who is willing to, I ain't got time for that. So what we've done, right? We've been able to fund incredible initiatives by doing our own fundraising. When you bring that neighborhood together and that neighborhood already has about seven to ten churches in it, you know how much real black wealth that is? When you got the corner stores that you are offering them something by helping them keep their storefront clean and keeping them out of trouble with the licensing people and all of that, and you work together as a community. And in my neighborhood, we got a University of Maryland that sits right down the street. University, if you gonna be here, you gotta pay some taxes. We have got to get out of this mind frame, there's somebody gonna write us this big old check and gonna fund our salvation. I'm sorry, I don't have time to wait for that, you know why? Cause we hit three hundred murders today. I just don't, so for me, I'm looking at all, everything outside of the box, starting with fundraising. Because literally, when it came down to my back-to-school drive, I started, I got in my phone with people that I already had relationship with and asked a bunch of them to give me twenty dollars. Before I knew it, I raised four thousand dollars in two days. Back-to-school drive, we gave away four hundred boxes of food. I just gave about two hundred packed book bags to Sabrina Sutton because they just starting to give out, cause I had that much left from what we were able to get from just raising our own money. So I think that we gotta begin, especially in spaces like this, because like the sister Dion said, I believe everything that we need to save Baltimore is on this Zoom.
That's right.
I believe everything we need to save Baltimore is right here on this Zoom. And I think that if we come out of this with some real collaboration on everything from the relationships that are the best thing, God blessed me with. My story's a little different, I went to prison real young, I do this work because I love Baltimore, somebody helped me when I came out. So I didn't go straight to college and do some of the other stuff, God has blessed me to be educated, to build a career, do some other things. But it's literally been people in my life. And I still wholeheartedly believe more in people than I believe in politics, more than I believe in seats and offices and all of that. And God has blessed me with the relationships to be able to do what I need to do. So I, I want us to really kind of consider some conversations around breaking some of that traditional aspect of fundraising specifically. Cause they have already shown us that if you want this one, that one or the other one, we ain't gonna give you this money. I watched white-led organizations get money to do work in black communities that have no reputation. They have no stake or anything in that community. And I'm not a racist, I'm just telling you, the people who are in that community, even because they don't have the capacity to, to sometimes pursue the funding, or they just don't have the relationship, right? To be able to get that, to be able to get to the right person to, to secure that funding. No, we just gotta think outside the box. I said, realize that it's real black wealth in black communities. But we gotta organize the black neighborhood and the black stakeholders. And I realize how much money is in my neighborhood with a Morning Star Baptist Church of Christ, a Allen A and me, uh, 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 what's the other one down there, the real big, Carter Memorial and all of that? And they love, they love it, cause I'm the one willing to go into the poor homes. Give you some money to go, cause we don't wanna go, we just get, you take whatever you need and you go, ma. You know what I mean? Those relationships and non-traditional fundraising. It's something that I, I'm all about the relationships, keep me going and I love it.
No, that's, uh, that's another perspective that we gotta take a look at and understand and, and kind of navigate through. And I appreciate, you know, the three of you just sharing that piece because to be honest, we have to start from somewhere and we have to see the fruit from the lake. A lot of, of our legends that have paved the way and died for us to even be here today. There's nothing left, there's no generational wealth, there's nothing to look forward to and the chains continue to break. So we need to take the ideas, come together, but we gotta, the, the one thing I'll say before I ask this last, last question. We have got to surrender to each other to respect the essence of all of our gifts and talents. But I've come to realize, just looking at this call now, it's easy for us to say, oh, we can go and do this, we got everybody right here. But it's something about each and every one of us to come together as one. Because I deal in the Jewish community, I deal in the, because I'm trying to learn, I'm trying to figure out, what is it about everyone else? That separates us and gets us to kind of deal the way we deal? Because oftentimes when I talk or when I share or when I do, it's like, you don't fit the way I usually do business. Or you're not around the kind of people that I like to be around. And it's that disconnect that I, I don't really understand because when I came back from retired playing ball, I went to Dion, I went to all the different people as a humble servant saying, how can I serve? And are we in this together for the greater good of everybody? But what I come to realize, when you really sit down with individuals, everybody wants to be a chief, but never learned how to be an Indian. And I'm, I work hard in trying to be the best Indian so I can learn how to be a chief. See, we, we keep skipping steps, like some of us taking platforms that we, we're not even equipped for. And that's what I think a lot of times is the disconnect because people have gotten things and people have been in position for these opportunities, but were they ready for? And I think that it's very important that we equip ourselves with being ready. Because what I've come to realize when I'm out here, we're really smart, we're really powerful. There's a lot that we can do, but it's that, that history, that traumatization that we feel like we owe something because of our ancestral past. See, for me, I love history and I know my history. But the one thing I understand is that you have to do the work. What is the plan? And how are we gonna execute the master plan to build up all this greatness that's on this call? So it's important that we, we look at that and I hope everybody understands that I've just appreciated it, doc, cause I'm learning. I hope everybody else is learning and I hope we come off this call in a favorable space. So the last one is, how do we get city to the people? Alright, we're gonna have comments after this last question. What you got, my man, what's your name, what's your name, buddy?
How you doing? Praise, praise God, my name is, my name is Bridgely Handy. And, um, basically, yes, I do, I do agree with Brother Marvin. And, and, um, I, I see it is a lot of talking. And I do believe that us on this panel, we all can do this. I mean, you know, just like you said, you know, we, we have this and we have that, you know, we all have, you know, different things, you know, our ties or whatever. But I think with God and the real people, I think we can really do this because ain't nobody gonna help us do this but us. You know, ain't no funding, ain't no outsiders, you know, ain't no, you know, nobody's gonna help us do this but us. And I think this paneling of godly people, I mean, really godly people can really do this. And I think, uh, talking, I mean, yes, we already know what we need to do, we already know what we need to do, we've been talking for years. It's time to start moving. I mean, like really start moving, we need to like set a day and we all, whoever's serious, you know, we just need to start. You know, just put your foot down, put, put your foot down and, you know, and, 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 um, you know, once it's started, then, you know, you know, there's no turning back after that, you know? And I'm already a, um, you know, a, 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 a street runner far as like, uh, 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 politics and, you know, trying to, trying to, uh, do things far as the kids and, um, daycare and all of that. So yes, um, you know, I've been locked up too and, you know, really, you know, and I know a lot about kids, you know, the psychology and all that, and just like the young lady said, yes, they need somebody to talk to and just listen to them, you know? But at the end of the day, they need somebody that's gonna see them moving too, you know? We just talking, they wanna see some action, you know? They wanna see some talking and action at the same time, you know, so they could be convinced, yes, it's the time. And yes, I think now is our time, now is no better time than, you know, the present or yesterday or next week. I think we should start soon as possible. And you know, somebody might say, oh yeah, he's talking this and talking that. But I know, y'all know I'm telling the truth, we talking too much, we need to start moving. We need to start really putting our foot down, setting.
No, I got you.
Okay, alright, well, alright, well. Alright, well, you know, just, just, um, you know, if it's on tackle, you know, anybody that, that need to contact me or, you know, I get any, a, a, anybody info. But we just really need to start moving and that's my whole point. And, and, um, you know, y'all could, y'all could carry on.
No, I appreciate you, brother, you got a
I'm front line, I'm front line.
No, we, we, we need to
I'm front line, you know?
We appreciate you, man.
I'm front line, I'm scared, you know, you know, for the ones that's, you know, that's scared to go to the streets, to go to the hoods and go to the neighborhoods. I'm front line, I'm front line, God put me here for this reason, for these kids, for this next generation. He put me, he put me here for this, it's like I'm changing my whole life for this.
Brother Red, brother Red.
I ain't really gonna get into it, but God knows my whole life. I'ma let y'all.
No, brother Red.
Okay, alright.
Listen to me, I want you to put on your chat, give me your information and, and put, put your phone number on the chat so we can move on with the meeting, alright? So we can talk and we can get together. Alright, buddy? Don't forget. Alright, um, Ms., Ms. Lawson? How do you feel about what everybody say? You know, what, what's your position on all of this about the, the funding, the? community, what Mr. Marvin said, Dion said, what's your take?
My take on all of it is, is I think it's really amazing how all of you actually have take the time out of your day to support us youth. Because that's all it takes. I feel as though, you know, it's a lot of, you know, everybody's saying, we gotta stop talking or we gotta do this. It just start at one percent of time. That's all you need. Like when I went to Sister Saving the City, that's, that's all I needed. And then now I'm out helping other people. I'm out telling other people to come write for Y B C and support your dreams. Come do excellence and ambition to get your business right. I did not know how to do none of this. I started at there when I was like thirteen. I am sixteen now. It has been an amazing time. You just gotta meet the right people and trust that they will get you somewhere one day. It's a time, um, I thought I was just gonna go there, come back home. That is my home. I love to be there. I love to help people. The funding comes from you and you only, like I say, you gotta fund in your community. You cannot try to go out and help somebody else's community. One of the people that helped you get where you at are sitting there struggling still. You gotta help the people that helped you first. And that's how you always get a bigger community. That's how you always help everybody else. So just always, I would say, always help people who helped you and then it will keep spreading from there.
Now, we appreciate you, sweet. We, we got the last question. And, um, after the last question, we want all the panelists to take two minutes to close out. And then we, we're gonna give last comments and then we'll talk about next steps moving forward. So the last question is, how do we get city resources to the people who need it the most? Living communities that lack access and have the least? Start with you, Ms. Pender.
Oh, Lord, thank you. Um, you guys are just wonderful. I'm saying, I had no idea, um, how full my heart is right now. Um, especially Amira. Thank you so much. Amira, I just, oh my God, I had no idea. She don't know. I'm gonna give her a big old hug when I see her. Um, how do I feel that the funding sources can make it to the actual people who need it? Um, what, what can we do? Um, I think, I, I love that, um, we have a new administration coming in. Um, and that we have some new fire. It's a new fire in our belly. I think twenty twenty did that. A lot of us who were already grassroots, already on the ground, already doing the work, I'm speaking for myself now. I had to, especially when the pandemic first hit and we, we had to re-shift, we had to shift on how we provided programming. So our young people like Amira, um, like Embria who is on the line, um, we got, we had meetings, virtual meetings and just talked about, what do you guys wanna do? What do you guys think we can do virtually to keep you guys working, to keep your stipend coming in? Because we literally take our funding and we pay our young people stipends to learn, um, the trade and the skills that they're learning from Sister Saving the City and through Excellence and Ambition. So we hire them. Um, and so if we are hiring them and their parent is now laid off because of COVID, that is bringing money into the household that wasn't there prior to COVID and also helping out, um, you know, in that, making sure they have food. You know, doing the things that we have to do in a small nonprofit, regardless of if the larger, um, funders have us, like Marvin was saying, reaching out to our networks, getting the resources necessary. How do we take the, the people who have the funding to give it to, to the, to the people who are actually doing the work? Or to the communities and the families who really need it? I don't know. Because I feel like if, if we had the power to do it, then we would do it. As Sis said, Dion said, there are four, forty-seven hundred nonprofits. And I think it goes back to that concept, like someone said, um, of working together, getting it done together, not having that crab in the bro mentality that goes on in Baltimore where you got it, I want it, I want my name on it, it gotta be about me. All that stuff, we have to put that away because that's how the funding has been going into the wrong places because of those reasons. So I think the way to do it, okay, I got it. The way to do it is to cut all of that BS and do it. You know, start with the nonsense, start with the politics and, and do it. Period. Done.
I know Marvin, Marvin spoke, I mean, thorough in detail his position. Does anybody, before we give closing remarks for everybody to get two minutes, does anybody wanna piggyback on that that's on the panel?
Yes, I would like to say something. I'm Miss Catherine, the founder of Sister Saving the City.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, and I, I really want to relate to what Marvin said. And this summer, well, before the summer started, the, um, Youth Works Program, uh, city program said, oh, we can't fund as many of your children as we used to. And I want to say, I reached out to my church, the open church, it's not in the city. And they were able to give money. Money just came from all different places so that we could add an additional eleven children to our program. So it's, no, we, we can't always act like that we don't care about our people because we do. In addition, my sorority, they were sending checks left and right to make sure that we were able to take care of the kids, not just for the summer, but for the school year. So, you know, don't, don't keep putting us down because we will step up and we have stepped up. So we gotta look at the big picture. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. And if we just took a fraction, Danell, of that group and put them in a youth village, just think what we could do in this city. We've been trying to build a youth village since twenty ten. And, uh, you wouldn't have all these organizations all over the place because we could come together. That, that's the message I want to leave. We need to come together. Stop wasting our time. Come together and make a difference for these children. Everything that was talked about has already been studied for the youth village. And, and some of you are shaking your heads because y'all know we, we've been at it. So folks, we got to come together. That we don't need to be popping here, there and everywhere. We got the power. That's my comments. Thank you.
That's fine. Per- perfect. We appreciate you. Thank you, Ms. Coop. We appreciate you. All right. So you wanna start off with?
Mind if I kind of take?
We, we're gonna start off for the, for the case of time, we're gonna start off with, with Ms. Rivera to give your last two minutes.
Thank you. Um, I'll use my last two minutes to piggyback what, um, off of what Miss Catherine said. And actually off of what you said too. A lot of this comes, um, a, a lot of this starts with humility. There are already people in our community that have mastered this. And of course, I'm not gonna lie, maybe a little biased because, um, Park Heights Renaissance is my lead agency. But we are doing the work and our executive director, she's, she's setting, she's setting the tone. We have in Park Heights, we have black principals, we have all black principals in our schools, um, in Park Heights. We also, um, have real estate development that is happening. We have a, a lot of, um, things going on at, at Park Heights Renaissance where we are, we are definitely making a difference in Park Heights when it comes to the community, when it, when it comes to collaboration, when it comes to, um, social capital. So a lot of it does have to do with social capital, but the majority of it is humbling yourself and honoring those that understand the logistics and the infrastructure so that you can learn. Because if you don't know, you need to humble yourself under people that are already doing the work. Let's stop reinventing the wheel. That's what happens. We waste too much time. That's why there's four thousand seven hundred nonprofits in Baltimore City. Because a lot of it is reinventing the wheel. If I know you're good at something, why can't I call you and say, hey, Chu, this, um, is going on? How do I do this? What do I need to do? Can you come and teach this to me? Can you come and part this into my youth?
Well said.
Without me feeling enough at it.
No, I got you. Uh, Ms. Roberts, Ma. Your two minutes?
I don't know how I can go, I don't know how I can go behind Ms. Rivera. I don't know if I could do that, but, um, but I understand. I appreciate your, your passion in this. What I'm taking away is that the great is, is, you know, the need is, is great, right? Um, and we don't need to reinvent the wheel for sure, but I think that we, what you, what you said was right, Ms. Rivera, that we do need to be able to feel comfortable enough to come to one another. And on the other side, you have to be open to receive me, right? Because I can come up to you, but if you don't open the door, then what's the point, right? So that's what I wanna say.
No, outstanding. Uh, Dolly.
Yeah, I, I'll say, hey, my heart is pretty full just hearing all of the, you can hear all the amazing work that's happening here within, within Baltimore. So hats off to everybody here. I'll, I'll echo what I said earlier, like, we've got a, we've got a moment and I'm excited to, uh, figure out. Part of our folks excited about taking advantage of this moment so that we're not having the same conversation, you know, in three years, five years, ten years. Because we didn't, we didn't move forward. So I'm excited to see what comes out of this.
Dion.
Um, uh, so Chu and I go back. This isn't gonna be long. Um, but we've had some deep conversations where we talk about intention and how if we really are, if we put our intention into truly what we want to see happen, it will manifest, it, it will be created. Um, so if we already know that there, that we are the superheroes that we've been waiting for, we've already have examples that show that we've been able to, you know, create change on, on a small scale. Um, and if we have the intention and, and the want desire to make it happen, you know, one plus one plus one equals three. So, um, I'll, I'll end it the way we started. We are, you know, be the solution. And I, I can feel on this call that that's what we're all coming to the table to do. So let it be done.
Ms. Pender.
Thank you. Um, you guys hit the nail on the head. Uh, um, I just, um, I don't know if Pastor Spence, um, is, is wanna talk about what the next steps are. But I'm using my minute so that we don't have to, you know? Um, but yeah, the Baltimore Action Catalyst Team, um, is what we are, have created. Um, so these town hall meetings, uh, will culminate to action plans in January. Uh, we have the community leadership training that's going to launch also in January, which is a five week, um, program where you come together. We decide on five concrete, um, action steps or plans to then implement throughout the year of twenty twenty-one. Um, and so I ask everyone here, um, you know, on behalf of the Baltimore Action Catalyst Team to join us, um, in those efforts. It's not just us sitting and talking. We've already, we're doing the talking now. Um, Pastor Spencer's taking the notes. Um, and then when we get together in January, it's gonna be, okay, these were the solutions that we said during the town hall. What can, what, what it, what it, what can we go with? What can we run with? What can we put on the back burner? What can we start between now and June? How do we act, move forward? Period. And so if you're about action.
You froze a little bit.
That's all I got. That's, that's my, that's my team. That's my minute.
Mr. Marvin.
One more thing, the training, the now.
Yeah, that's what I said, the training. So the training is five-week session, five-week training. We wanna train all of the, um, of, uh, the church clergy or the deacons or whoever you have. The stations, the program directors, frontline staff, we wanna help to train the community association presidents and whoever sits on the community association and how to make action happen. And so in that five weeks, we're not gonna sit, again, it's not about sitting and talking about the problems. It's sitting, talking about the solutions and then app, and, and then making the plan to move forward. Getting in touch with whatever city, um, people we gotta get in touch with to do it, uh, whatever it is. So, um, and that's what I can't necessarily say because the last town hall is on December sixteenth. Um, and that one will be about economic and community development. And we'll be taking all of the notes from all three town halls together into that meeting in January, into that training in January to then come up with the actionable steps to take to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pender. Appreciate you. Marvin.
You're muted.
He called me right when he came to the.
Bless you.
Um, first of all, I wanna thank, uh, Pastor Spencer and everybody tonight for, um, allowing me to be a part of this great discussion. And you know, the thing that I, I, I wanna just kind of reiterate is, you know, as a, as a leader in Baltimore, I just had to rethink my strategy. And, um, I realized that while as I can be a resource to, um, some citywide efforts that when I put a focus on the area where God has planted me, it has allowed me to be so effective. And then the things that I do in that area can be built to scale and be reproduced in other areas. Um, that along with again, rethinking how we fund and finance our movement. It grieves me, um, when I hear us continually having a conversation about a lack of resource, resources. Because I noted then we're talking about that nonprofit industrial complex and it puts such a competitive space between those of us who intend on doing good. Um, when the reality of it is, we completely nullifying our own ability, um, to come together and to fund our visions. You know, the word of God says that he gives us the power to get wealth. And I have seen God do it in ways that I wouldn't have imagined. Um, and I'm just grateful that, um, because of where I come from, I've explored some different, um, different types of ways to get the resources necessary to fund the vision. And with twenty, what do you say it is, uh, bro? Twenty acres you got coming?
Yes, sir.
Chu, what did you say? It was twenty acres?
Yes, sir.
With that twenty acres, I wanna be one of the people, I wanna be one of the people that will use my non-traditional fundraising sources. I don't care if it builds out one classroom. If I can't fund all twenty acres, I believe that if I can pay for one classroom to be built and the materials that it take, um, I've helped build a legacy that's gonna do some changing in Baltimore. I don't wanna, I don't, I don't wanna that competitive thing that we do and who doing what and all that. You ain't never gonna hear that from me ever. Because I believe that we gotta all come together and in some way, um, be able to bring who and what we are. I do this thing I call hiring on the block. I literally just felt God, um, move on me to take what I believe is one of the greatest resources I have. And that's my relationship with businesses. I sat up on a sidewalk one day with a table and a computer. And thus far, forty-seven people who were in the line of fire are now working in various warehouses where I have relationships. And these relationships have gotten us past pre-employment drug screening. It's gotten us past long exhaustive, uh, interview processes. Um, because they are willing to trust me, I'm able to do the hiring for them. Um, and it's gotten again, forty-seven people who are what otherwise in the line of fire, what I mean, in the line of fire, they were either in the lifestyle or in the community where, um, this murder is happening the most prominent. And now they leaving there daily, going to work for a good living wage. Um, and if, if in fact, we can bring that to your community, it's just me, a desk and a computer. Um, and let's make it happen like that, you know, let's bring the things that make us great together so that we can be able to, um, you know, just do more.
No, I appreciate you, man. Thank you for, for sharing. And the last person before, uh, I'd be remiss, Ms. Lawson.
Um, I would just like to say that I am really grateful to come on and talk to all of you so you can hear my ideas. Because it is very rare that I get to speak to people who, um, can actually hear me and do something about it. But, um, yeah, I think like you said, it's about, it's not about competition. I feel if it's like a, a youth center and it's like the highest one in a community. And then it's like a small youth center in the next community, you come together. You know, it's not about you being better. Y'all can be better together. Y'all can build together so we can, you can have two big industries, two big communities. And then y'all can keep spreading on. Don't just try to build yourself higher. Help other people so everybody can be higher up. So nobody is left behind. So everybody can have a place. Everybody can have somebody. Everybody has a purpose and everybody can have something to do. And that's all I have to say.
So, you know, thank you. Thank you so much. And I just.
I'd like to say something before you guys close out too.
Who's that? We, we in for.
Embry Jones. I'm here with, uh, Danell and McKinstry. Um, I'm a youth myself. I've been in here, I've been a youth for a long time.
I've been in here, I've been a youth for a long time. I've been on a lot of meetings, a lot of town hall meetings. I'm also a part of the Yes Drop-In Center. I done been down town hall, I done spoke at town hall. Um, just to piggyback on everything that I heard from you guys tonight, it actually sounds good. I'm definitely, definitely, definitely wanna see the community come together. I'm big on, everything starts at home. So if you in a community, in that community know you, I feel it's better to start there and work your way, you know, work your way from where you at, rather than to jump out there, where you notice that people can help you right here, right then and there. Um, I also wanna piggyback on what Mr. Now said about getting it done. You get what I'm saying? Like a lot of times, I get on these meetings and these calls, and we talk to these people as youths, and we sitting here today going through stuff, or we sitting here struggling right now, and they telling us this gonna happen, and that's gonna happen. But actually see it unfold, that happen before your eyes, is a big thing. You get what I'm saying? Like a lot of people tell a lot of you, there's a lot of centers out here, there's a lot of places out here you can go and get help. But it's one thing for somebody to tell you they gonna do something, and it's a whole nother thing for somebody to actually pull through and get it done. So I wanna be able to go through this whole journey, which I wanna be able to watch this unroll and help any way that I can possible to help any young youth younger than me, or that's my age, in any possible way at all. Um, and good night.
No, I, I appreciate you giving your voice. And uh, it's, it's just ever so powerful to hear how young people speak about, because it's, it's about you all right now. Y'all, y'all are the next generation. So I wanna just close out before I give it to Ms. Spence. You know, we're, we're in, we're in spiritual warfare. And, you know, when I sit back and I think about everything that everybody said, I'm just ever so grateful to learn and grow from each and every individual that spoke tonight. There's a powerful word that I think that we need to master, and that's empathy. You know, a lot of us do not know what that word really means. And we don't live for that word because of our own situation. I don't judge people. And I don't knock people, I don't have no time for that, because I shouldn't be here today. Because the things that I went through as a young man, I should be dead. But God chose me to have an opportunity to use whatever my gifts and talents and just be a duo. And I think the people that's on this call, they're duos. You all are boots on the ground, and you're passionate about what you feel. And the question that we have to ask ourselves is, are we ready? Are we ready for the, the real opportunity? There's a thing that I talk about all the time, and it's called the SWOT. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And I ask the question, what is the most important out the four? And eighty-five percent of the people don't get the right answer. The right answer is the opportunity. That's the most powerful thing. We all have strengths, we all have weaknesses, and we all have haters and competitors. But the opportunity, are we ready in our mind, body, and soul to be ready for the opportunity? There's no I in this for me. I know that if we don't do something real quick, it's gonna be trouble forever. I'm glad COVID happened. I'm glad that the challenges and systemic racism and all the stuff, I'm glad it happened, happened. Because it wakes us up. If you notice, it's an even playing field now. Now you gotta look at you in the mirror, now you gotta look at your heart, and it's about the work. So for me, I just wanna work. I'm here because this is a part of the process, so people can get to know. But I just think you know people for what they do and what their actions are. And I just wanna be an action item, and I want the people on this call to be an action item. And whatever we gotta do, we gotta do it. But I just know that we can't do it by talking. We have to really, really support each other and really, really learn how to be Indians. Because I'm, I don't have no problem with current water. I don't have no problem with wiping up whatever, I don't have no problem with being all the way in the back. But does everybody feel that way? Because if everybody on this call doesn't feel, I've been in all of it, y'all. I've been in it all, the trench trench. And I had to take a step back, because I was gonna die in this. And I wanna live, so some work can be done. So I thank you all from the bottom of my heart. Everybody's views were important, and you all are champions. And we just gotta teach our young people, teach our other loved ones and everybody. Because I'll close with this last thing. Don't allow, it's a thing called cognitive dissonance, dissonance. Cognitive dissonance. When you're indoctrinated with what you think is real when it's not. That's why I keep talking about spiritual warfare. We are worthy of greatness, and we are worthy of doing the things that's necessary to empower each other. And I just pray that you all come off this call in a better situation, because I get tired of these too, y'all. You know, because it's like, well, we don't. But I believe in my heart that we gonna get together. Ms. Spence gonna put some, put a plan in place, and let us all use our gifts and talents for the greater good of Baltimore. And let us be the staple for the whole United States. Ms. Spence, close us out.
You're muted.
You're muted, Ms. Spence.
I am so elated. I'm feeling so overwhelmed. There are so many emotions that I am truly feeling right at this moment. I, I'm just, this was great. I appreciate it, I appreciate everyone that participated. Chu, I just appreciate you. Karen, just the Bat Team. They can tell you all, and I'll make this very brief. I shared with them, I said, the scripture said to write the vision and make it plain.
Hmm.
That they, that we can run. And I told them, I'm too old to do any running. I need people, don't let this make up for ya, I'm old. But when God puts something in your spirit, when you have it, when you have a desire, when you want better for yourself, and you want better for your people, and you want better for your community, you want better for your children and your great-grandchildren that are coming, and your next-door neighbor, and those across the street, down the street, around the street, you feel like you just gotta do something other than hear people complain. And so with us coming together, I put a word out, you know, just calling for people, somebody to come, somebody that was willing to help, somebody was willing to answer the call. And Danell was the first one answered. And we've been, you know, boots on the ground. We had boots on the ground before, but I mean, in terms of being a collective body, collective group, you know, trying to get it done, trying to call people together. And we have the number. And I told you all when we started out, that my great-grandchild, you know, his saying, he said, good power is never give up. And in the midst of it, we didn't give up. We've had people that were coming out against us, people we thought would be with us, and they haven't been with us, and it's just been one thing. But we, we were determined, we were gonna keep moving forward. We weren't gonna put off, oh, God. I'm sorry, y'all. That's that churchy part of me, all right? I'm, I'm a pastor too, so I gotta try. Marvin, I'm trying, okay? I feel my health, but I'm trying. Oh, my God. But we were determined that we were gonna keep moving forward. And whoever came, came, whoever helped, helped, whoever supported, supported. And I'm grateful. And we do have a plan. We are coming back together. We're not gonna let the ball fall. You know, we're not gonna let somebody take it out of our hand, we're not gonna let somebody kick it. We're gonna keep moving forward with it. And I told Danell, I said, look, I'm just writing the vision. I'm making it plain, so the folk can run with it and all. And I want us to run with it. We have one more uh, town hall coming up. We're planning a training, a trainer, train, trainer, training. So we can equip people to go out and train other people. Marvin, you have so blessed my heart. You have, I've been in ministry since eighty-seven, you have so blessed my heart. You have so opened my eyes up, you know, to a new move of God, a new calling. I'm not gonna believe it at the time, I'm just excited. Tell other people about it. If they come, wonderful. If we don't, they don't, we're still pressing forward. We will be back on December sixteenth. We're gonna make this uh, video available. Karen's gonna give us the information, we're gonna make it available, we're gonna put it out on Facebook. We were trying that tonight, and it was giving us all kinds of problems. But we're still gonna put it out, have other people, and share.
Hack Baltimore, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Hack Baltimore can help with the problems.
It's in the house, y'all, it's in the house. Karen and Danell, they're, okay, they're in the house. I appreciate you all, love you, I won't hold you any longer, chap, we love you.
Take care, everybody, thanks, thanks again for having me on, and I appreciate y'all, much love.
All right, thank you, everybody, good night.
Have a great night, everyone, be safe.
Thank you.